30 PM, Kathy, can you give me roles?
Councilman Campbell.
Here.
Councilwoman Brerstard is absent. Councilman Brerstard.
Here. Here. Here.
Having a quorum present call on Father Albert to lead us in a prayer followed by the pledge of Jonathan Dortez.
And Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Good gracious, Father, we ask you to put out your spirit of wisdom upon these, the leaders of our community, that they may make decisions for the good of all, but here we may glorify you, continue to praise you. In the name of Jesus Christ, we pray.
Amen.
Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit.
And the Lord.
Our presence is to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, a little bit of housekeeping for those of you who haven't been here before, or maybe it's been a while. We like to limit comments during agenda items to three minutes, seven minutes for presentations, although the football team might be a little bit longer than that. And you may leave after your agenda item, we just ask that you do so quietly and without disturbance of the rest of the meeting. That being said, we'll call for public comments if we're starting the meeting. Is there any public comments at this time on any agenda item? Bearing none, we'll move on to presentation, personnel. Item number one, to approve the recommendation to appoint police department personnel. Chief Mike Cordey, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am. Today I have Mr. Michael Goodrich. He's eighteen years of age, but first I want you to know he graduated from high school at sixteen, almost seventeen. He joined the military, he's in the National Guard, and he is eighteen now, so I can legally hire him. So I am recommending hiring of Michael Goodrich.
I'm a move.
I have a motion and a second, it's also my recommendation to hire Officer, soon to be Officer Goodrich. Thank you for wanting to be part of the team. I know that you are family to someone else who's in our police force who is a very good officer. So we are very excited to have you onboard. I did look at the application, very impressed, thank you for your service, and we're happy to have you as part of the team. Any other questions or comments?
Can you carry it?
Yes, yes, good, you'll probably go, it's not the next one, the very next one, but I'm looking at the first one.
He's already tested too, though, right? Yeah.
Oh, yeah, he's taken his tests and everything, he's done well.
Any other questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to presentations, item number one, to recognize the remaining Catholic football team who won state championship. And I'm gonna read this from my seat so that we can have the mic so that everybody in the lobby can hear. Coach, if you'd like to come in and just stack up this way. And if everybody can't fit, we can take another picture outside, but bring in as many as you can get in here. You might want to, yeah. Or in that corner right there, you might want to get. I think you've never seen your lineup like this. I do wanna say thank you to Councilman Brady for doing the work to put this together, as well as the rest of the council for being in support of this declaration. Ready, Coach? Okay. Congratulations to remaining Catholic for winning the 2024 Select Division Four Championship. The city of Abbeville is filled with pride for the B.C. coaches and football players who have brought home the 2024 Select Division Four Championship win over Wichita Christian 33-21. We recognize you on this day for the joy and admiration you have brought upon yourselves through hard work and dedication that began years ago for many of you. Your fourteen-and-oh season record puts you in a rare and exciting position. We applaud you on this championship. It was an exciting conclusion to a football championship game. To Coach Brock Prejean, personal friend of mine, his staff and school administration, and every member of the 2024 football team, we recognize each of you for a job well done and deservedly for the cheers from here in Abbeville, from Mayan Parish, and all of Acadiana. We would be remiss to not also mention Jonathan Dortez, championship game MVP, and state record holder, and his teammate Caleb Guidry, whose dad's also a friend of mine, who sealed a championship game victory with a timely eighty-seven-yard pick-six touchdown. This joyous holiday season took a large maroon and white wave of support in the Louisiana Superdome Thursday, December twelfth, 2024. Therefore, now I, Rosamond White, Mayor of the City of Abbeville, and the Abbeville City Council call on this day to be recognized as the remaining Catholic football championship day 2024 in the season, in the city of Abbeville. Congratulations, guys, you've made it all the way. So I guess we're gonna have to do some pictures of presenting of the declaration, and then we can go out in the lobby and get a quick picture of the group and the council, okay? I'm bored of this.
Hey, boys, y'all go behind, like, y'all try squeezing.
Or even come kneel, yeah.
Look, some of the freshmen, y'all come and kneel in front. Y'all share with me this, honey?
Can you get everybody around?
Sorry, can I get right here?
Yes.
Let me go to the second row if you want.
Jeremy, you can get everybody back there.
Okay, let's try this way, okay, now I got y'all. All right, here we go, one, two, three. Okay, thank you. I'm good, you're good, guys.
Thank you, guys.
I just can't. She usually has a video. Maybe because it needs to be on stream instead of webcam? Yeah. I don't know.
Okay, moving on, minutes and approval of bills. Item number one, to ratify bills paid in the month of November 2024. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number two, to approve the November 2024 budget actual.
Move.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments?
Mayor, if I could acknowledge the hard work of the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Mutom, and our CPA, that's what brought this in line with our budget for 2024.
Thank you, Councilman Brerstard, any other questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Moving on to new business, item number one, public hearing to receive comments from the public pertaining to the following proposed ordinance. A, an ordinance to approve the 2025 budget and the amended 2024 agenda. Actually, I'm going to entertain a motion to enter the public hearing before we go into the new business.
Move.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we are now at a public hearing to receive comments from the public pertaining to the following proposed ordinance. I'm gonna take them one at a time. Ordinance A, an ordinance to approve the 2025 budget and amended 2024 budget. Any questions or comments? Bearing none, we'll move on to item number, item B, an ordinance to amend section five, two fifty-nine, to the sign ordinance to add vinyl as an acceptable material and to approve blade signs as an approved style. Any questions or comments? Bearing none, moving on to C, an ordinance to amend section five, four of the building permit ordinance to include language that electrical services shall be cut at the utility pole for those found constructing or renovating without the proper permitting and to add fines to contractors who do not obtain proper permitting prior to constructing or renovating a property. Any questions or comments? Bearing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing and reconvene to a regular meeting.
Move.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes and public hearing is closed, we are now back in our regular meeting. Item number three, to accept the recommendation from the December third, 2024 ordinance committee to adopt an ordinance to approve the 2025 budget and amend the 2024 budget.
Move.
A motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number four, to accept the recommendations in the December third, 2024 ordinance committee meeting to adopt an ordinance to amend section five, two fifty-nine, to sign ordinance to add vinyl as an acceptable material and to approve blade signs as an approved style.
Move.
Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number five, to accept the recommendation of the December third, 2024 ordinance committee meeting to adopt an ordinance to amend section five, four of the building permit ordinance to include language that electrical services will be cut at utility pole for those found constructing or renovating without the proper permitting and to add fines to contractors who do not obtain proper permitting prior to constructing or renovating a property. Motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're gonna tell us the last meeting of the year, huh? Item number six, to award the contract for runway lining upgrade project. A motion and a second, council, I'm just gonna take one minute to let you know. We have been needing a new runway lining at the airport. We did bid out, not just the runway lining, but we had an alternate to pull the conduit, pull the electrical house from underneath and redo it so that we're not putting new lights on old wiring. It did come in a little bit over budget, and so it is my recommendation that we award base bid plus alternate one, base bid was two forty-three, two hundred and forty-three thousand zero five zero, and alternate one, which is a hundred and eighteen thousand, which is a total of three sixty-one zero five zero. We have three hundred and ninety thousand dollars from DOTD that is specifically to be used at the airport, airport funds. As you can see, there's gonna be a deficit of about twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty. We do have money in the airport fund, and that is the only place that money could be spent, so it's my recommendation to award base plus alternate and use twenty-nine thousand three hundred and fifty of local funds so we can complete those two parts of the project.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion in a second, any questions or comments? I don't want to do that fast.
I'd like to point out to the audience that this is helped greatly by the oil and gas royalties that the city does receive next to the airport. So this is no individual tax revenue. The FAA and these royalties are explicitly for airport improvements.
Yeah.
And that's what this is.
And also, some of the funds in the airport improvement fund comes from lease of properties there at the airport. So we have an FBO that we ran out, there's a few fuel shortage. But any money that the airport generates has to be spent at the airport per FAA and DOTD, that's why we keep getting the CIP and bill funds.
And that take, uh, nine, take off.
Yes, yes, and this moment is actually the last two years the DOTD came and inspected, they recommended that the lighting needed to be updated, so finally we're getting it out. And we did get it out, and we're ready to go to construction, so. Okay, any other questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, to adopt the resolution to approve the 2025 holiday, this is good.
Move.
Okay, motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, discussion pertaining to making intersection of Rodeo Road and North Airport Road a three-way stop sign.
I'm with the, um, um, second that they put a caution light across there, not the second, but the, uh, for safety reasons.
Okay, you wanna make the motion to do a three-way stop, and then we'll have a discussion about it after?
Yes, a caution light after.
Okay, well, so the motion is to put a three-way stop sign with a caution light. I'm not so sure we'll be able to do it, but we'll take your motion, if I hear a second, and then we'll have discussion, and we can vote, okay?
I see.
Have a motion and a second, any questions or comments? I'm gonna yield the portable chief party as well as Chris, but I'm gonna tell you a little bit of history of this. We have been contacted multiple times from the owner of Maison du Monde, which is at the end, well, midway down North Airport at the end of Rodeo Road, about people, there's a, it's kind of a dogleg, I guess, it's a bin in the road, and people miss the curb and hit the ditch. At one time, someone hit it, took out a telephone pole. Recently, an employee's family member, it's very dark down there. We did do some lighting, try to help people see that curb. So we did have a meeting with chief, I've been wanting him to give his feedback also. One of the things that we discussed is maybe long-term petitioning to the police jury, what could we do to fix that, but that's a much longer-term solution. One of the recommendations would be a three-way stop sign to slow people down as they are heading northbound on that road. And so that's why we're presenting this for discussion. Okay, chief, you wanna take anything or any comments?
Mine probably that long term where we straighten that road out.
Yeah.
That is a really odd-shaped road, and I've seen several cars right there.
And that, you know, now with the Amazon facility there, with the, uh, the police jury is building their emergency, the OEP building will be there, so that the three-way stop sign might slow this down a little. Chris, you have something to add?
What we plan on doing is putting up the three-way, uh, all-way stops and putting some solar panel lights on top that'll blink at night, which will, uh, train the residents that travel that road to, uh, that there is a three-way stop to stop.
Well, that takes care of the request of caution light.
Yeah, I think these lights are gonna, um...
They'll flash at night.
Yeah, they'll flash at night, work off of solar, so we don't have to worry about putting power to it.
The problem with the caution light is infrastructure, it's undergirdling.
Yeah, right, right. And the, and the, and the straightening of the road, that's gonna be a major project if it can even be done, because there's a lot of drainage right there, so. But I think the, the lights on top of stop signs are gonna really help that intersection idea.
So councilman, would you like to amend your motion to just consider a three-way stop sign?
Uh, you're right, amended to deal with the caution light.
Okay, so I got a second to the amendment?
Yes.
Okay, a motion and a second to consider the amended motion, which is just a three-way stop sign with flashing blinkers on it for the intersection of railroad, uh, I'm sorry, Airport Road and Rodeo Road. Any further discussion or comments? Yes, ma'am?
How many recorded accidents y'all had in that area in the last, about, two years or so? Recorded accidents? Two, one?
Didn't try, didn't check for today, but I know about three.
In the last two years?
No, in the last year, there's probably been three.
Well, ones that I know about personally.
Yeah.
Now, there could have been three more, but yes, it's not that many. But usually it's because of that little dogleg, people lose total control, because they're noticing that they're in the middle of the oncoming lane when they get to the intersection.
And how many of y'all actually traveled that road on a daily basis?
No, I don't travel on a daily basis, I'll tell you that.
You're able to justify this, because I travel that road daily. And by you just doing the stop sign, that's not gonna be enough because of the speed.
Right.
To get there, that little area, it does have that, but if you travel it on a daily basis, you know that's there. So...
It's just new drivers.
It's new drivers. So if the speed limit is still forty-five, which is high, and you could still put the stop sign there, won't resolve it.
Yeah, we didn't consider the speed limit whenever we discussed it.
So part of the...
No, we only control up to that intersection.
Just to, yeah. Just a little, I think maybe just a little past the intersection, but not much.
Yeah, it's the city limit.
So the other part of it is the parish. So we only responsible from bypass to basically where you want to go.
Yeah, so right there, but the issue is, once you get into the parish side, that's where the issue is. So putting a three-way and really helping coming into it is the issue is coming towards, uh, towards the intersection, towards...
Part of, part of the problem is coming northbound on that road is part of the issue, right? I'm sure southbound, they probably have higher speeds because they have a longer distance to reach there. I'm like, I don't travel that, so. It's a good point about the speed limit and consideration of it. We can control the speed limit on the south side of that intersection because of the city road, but we can't control it on the north side, that would have to be petitioned to the police jury.
Yeah, that's forty, it's forty-five in the city. But when you cross over, it goes higher, and that's not the issue.
And it's not a good rule for that speed.
When you come in into the city. So three-way ain't gonna solve the problem, I'm just being honest, a lot of traffic in every day.
Yeah, you probably need to talk to the police jury and ask them to drop the steam in the body.
Me, I ain't petitioning them.
But we do appreciate you telling us.
I mean, you're making all bad changes, but the changes, to make the changes, it gotta make sense.
Yeah.
And just because somebody say, oh, one accident, well, we ain't got, it wasn't recorded.
So I can tell you three that I know of, one that broke a telephone pole that were traveling so fast, right? And missed the curb, so, and pulled out power to the nurse at home and otherwise. So I can tell you three that have happened in the last year. What the numbers are before that, I didn't, I didn't pull that with the chief. But if your motion still stands, we're gonna consider it, but we do appreciate the comments, and it's good comments.
And I guarantee you, the person that hit that pole was somebody that don't travel and was more than likely doing the speed coming from other country.
And wasn't there.
Exactly. So I mean, that's it.
And it was raining.
That's three recorded accidents, but that's not the ones that hit that intersection that we just had to fix, that are unrecorded on record. A lot of them that go off that road right there, the cops are never called, they just continue to go and wreck, wreck their car, you know?
Not paying attention.
Yeah. Well, I hope the flashing stop sign failed, but that was my concern, about people not seeing the three-way stop sign.
We can monitor it real close to the first...
Yeah, if you break out the recommendation that's...
If you have trouble with it, we can give the police jury.
Okay, all right. So I have a motion and a second, the motion and a second still stands, any further comments or questions? Bearing none, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, to approve payment of the invoice from Delta Fire and Safety in the amount of eleven thousand four sixty-two twenty-nine for repairs to a fire truck. Chief Mear, you have the floor.
Yes, ma'am, this truck is a lot of avenue truck, the truck we've been having a lot of trouble with this year. And we had another one, I had a choice between repairing our spare truck or this one. This one was the cheaper one to repair, so that's the one I'll repair.
I think we already have, did we already have a motion covered in? Okay, I have a motion and a second. This is a 2016 pumper truck, and it was a ductor valve, primer, air valve, and window reverse indicator on it.
We'd had a fire we couldn't pump with, so we had to get it fixed.
All right, any other questions or comments with chief? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Motion carries. Item number ten, to approve payment of partial payment estimate number three in the amount of twenty-eight thousand four eighteen forty payable to Glen Leger Construction LLC relative to the Graceland Avenue Street and Sidewalk Improvements Project. A motion and a second, any questions or comments? Bearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eleven, to approve payment of partial payment estimate number fourteen in the amount of fifty-two thousand ten dollars and sixty cents payable to Shaw Construction Services LLC relative to the funding year 2021 LCD BG Sewer System Rehab Project. You heard me stumble on that because I'm so disappointed that that project is still ongoing. So I'm gonna have a motion in the second on the table, I'm gonna just speak to this so that it's on the record. This contractor is someone that we've had trouble with since the beginning. They are on a four-hundred, I can't remember, it's a four-hundred-and-twenty-something day contract, they're about four-hundred-something days over. So they have a four-hundred-and-seventy-three day contract, they're on eight-hundred-and-ninety-seven days right now. We asked it to revise the schedule and have them updating monthly, and it was supposed to be finished by the end of the year, and they updated their schedule to say they would finish the Mount Cornwall Heights Pump Station by December twenty-third, Lorraine. They would work on, they'd come back to work on January second through January twenty-fifth, and then punch list January twenty-seventh to January thirty-first. I have also advised our engineers, and our city attorney and I have advised them that we will be going after liquidated damages for the days that they're over their contract. Well, they have done, they have done this work, girl, so I would not recommend paying. I struggle every time an application for payment comes up. We do have the liquidated damages that are going to be notated at this payment, and we will be withholding that moving forward. And it will be at a cost of four hundred dollars a day for every day that they've been over contract, so. But you still wanna take your motion back again? Listen, I might like Chris to talk too, because I kinda have Chris as a watchdog on the ground on this project because of how, how long it's been, go ahead, Chris, you have it.
So, uh, very reluctant, right? They are asking for the rest of the twenty percent on the generator, which they are one-hundred percent complete.
So we installed a hundred seventy-five kilowatt generator at the main pump station because this project will get, will be bringing more sewer from the west side across the river to the sewer plant, and there's a generator, backup generator now.
So we're getting paid in fat, they asking for their coins, all been tested.
That's twenty-nine thousand dollars in this payment.
And then they're seventy, about seventy-five percent complete at the B.C. pump station.
If you look behind the stadium, you'll see the rig, their own bypass still, it's supposed to test it on the twenty-third, right?
They're gonna test, I think Friday, they're gonna test the electrical panel. And then on the twenty-third, the pump guy comes in to town.
So that's...
To test the pumps.
Yeah, that's...
So they're getting close. Their work schedule said they'd be finished both pump stations, but they haven't even started on the other one. So the only question about this payment is gonna be the repair of the railroad track, and I'm not sure how we decided to handle that, mayor.
There's one thousand four hundred twenty-eight dollars that's for a borehole patching on Railroad Avenue. Chris made him go back and fix it, and they need to go back and fix it again because it's still not good enough.
Yeah, so railroad is not the best road in the world, but when you fix something, you put it back better than what you took it, right? So they're playing around with it, they're squashing it themselves instead of hiring a professional. It's just not right to me, I can't honestly tell you to pay the fourteen-hundred-something dollars for that part of it, because it don't pass my inspection.
Yeah, so what Todd said is we can make them redo it on a punch list, we can also withhold the fourteen-hundred now if y'all want to, but it just needs to be in the motion, okay? So I'm gonna have a, I have a motion to amend to do the payment half less of one thousand four hundred and twenty-eight dollars for item number thirty-eight, borehole patching. And I have a second on that amendment, any other questions or comments? Bearing... No, there's gonna be additional work, and they're invoicing us once a month, so we'll have another invoice probably in January, as well as a closeout invoice, as well as retainage of... as well as retainage of ten percent that we're withholding. And then we'll get the, um, out of the last payment is when we'll take the liquidating damages out. Don't worry, I wanted to run them off, but I've been advised that nobody else will pick up the project. So, so it's a delicate dance we're doing here. Okay, any other questions or comments right now? Oh, don't worry, I already said whatever we have to do.
Four hundred dollars, yeah?
Yes.
We can come out and hold.
It's not my problem. It's not my problem.
Lucky it's all of you.
Yeah, okay, any other questions or comments? It's not my money, it's the public's money, we need to hold them accountable.
There you go.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes as amended. I'll send you this one in here. Okay, I think that's it for items of new business. Okay, um, and so none, like that? Departmental reports, engineers, Andy, do you have anything?
Yes.
Andy is with Sellers and Associates, she's the engineer that worked on the downtown street project.
And there, while we're talking to Andy, uh, Andy, if you've communicated with Chris, the punch list to complete that project is still high priority with us.
We had a meeting about that right before the meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Kim, is Kim here? Are you in the consulting office? No, okay. Attorney Board? Public Works Director Chris?
I'll take questions if you have any. Working on, working on y'all projects to, to complete them. Uh, Rachel, you're not quite complete yet, but we're working on it. Tony's is complete, but I saw something today, I made him go back and read it, so. Um, if, if there's no questions, uh, Merry Christmas to y'all. I don't see you.
Works are right, Byron.
All right, uh, course the talks again was a good six, was another success. Um, to say the weather that we had, we had some challenging times. Um, from teams dropping out to mastermind and a whole new schedule in the middle of the day. And was quite a, I had a big, but we made it work. Um, even with the weather, our totals came out, I could not get our local, um, ACOMO direct number, but a total between all the five Acadian areas, we collected five thousand, five hundred toys, two hundred plus bike scooters and hoverboards. So, um, that was still a huge success. Um, other than that, um, we did not get to finish the tournament, but how that goes, if you know anything about tournaments, it goes, it reverts back to pool play standings. Um, we did have two local teams that placed, uh, first and second, um, LA Omar, Autimorees and one of our team Louisiana team. Um, other than that, basketball starts this weekend, we're getting that underway. And on to our next sport, and baseball will be online by January one to start registration. Any questions?
Thank you Byron and Chris.
Byron and Christian.
Thank you. Moving on to mayor, I just have a couple of things. Uh, one is Jay, okay, which one we're going through first? Oh, okay, let's do that one first. So thank you to everyone, Rotary and all volunteers from within the community and all who attended Abbeville's Cajun Christmas Celebration. I thought it was a wonderful celebration, I saw a lot of happy kids. Uh, I was like a big kid, I enjoyed it too. Um, I did wanna say that Karen LeBlanc with Louisiana Public Broadcasting returned to Abbeville for that event. And she took footage all day as well as walked with us before the parade. And that episode will air at seven PM this Friday on Louisiana, the state we're in. With, uh, Abbeville will be featured as one of the unique, um, Christmas celebrations in the state of Louisiana. So I invite you all to tune in and I'll share it on our Facebook page once it airs. Um, I'm excited to see what she did. Um, but it was a fun day and I think everybody, everybody that attended enjoyed it, I hope. Um, thank you Councilman Bruce, I know you were very involved in making that happen, Chris and the team, you guys. I mean, everybody from the city team who participated went above and beyond, so we appreciate that. Um, this Friday, December twentieth, five thirty to eight thirty in Magdalen Square is Junior Auxiliary Presents Holidays in the Square. It's a free event for families. There'll be face painting, ornament making, dames, hot chocolate cookies, sweets and a lot more. Um, so we invite you all to, uh, show up and enjoy that, selfies with Santa, but bring your own cameras. But we did have a call today from Mrs. Stacy Landry, who if you, if you haven't heard about it, you've been living on the rock. He built a train that he had the last two Christmas events and he called today and said he would like to have the train at the square Friday. So we didn't get to work out the details. Chris and I were gonna work on that and chief get with you tomorrow. He called us late this afternoon, Rainy was working on it. But the train may make another appearance Friday at five thirty. So he gives free rides to the kids, just built it out of the goodness of his heart and, uh, and does it free for the kids and all the he, he was supposed to shut down at three Saturday and I think he rode an extra hour because he didn't want any kid to not get to ride it that was waiting in line. So thank you Stacy and Angie and all of the Glen Legge team who helped, uh, beat train conductors and wrangle the kids. Uh, I know it was something super special for our community. I even got excited like a kid seeing it come down the road, so. Great job and thank you for all you do for our community. Um, I'm sorry, yes.
Do you rent, do you rent the train?
No, right now he has no plans to rent it. He built it for his own use and, you know, community events and he's gonna put in some parades and stuff. But I asked him that question last night, I asked how many times he got called. He said, one for birthday party, is that what you're gonna do? He said, I don't think I'm gonna rent it right now. Said, no, keep it so it's more special, right? So right now his plans are not to rent it. It's just whenever he wants to show up and do it, he'll do it for the community, so. We're still thankful. Also, happy holidays to everyone. Thank y'all for being here from myself and from Councilwoman Bruce, or she asked me to thank everyone for being here. As I said, she had to be out tonight because Nigri's not, Nigri's under the weather and she's taking care of her. So happy holidays, she asked me to share that with all of you. Other than that, that's all I have. I will move on to police chief, chief Mike Party, you have the floor.
Uh, like you said, the parade and the festival went down without any trouble at all. I have no complaints from anyone about the festival. Uh, the only thing I have to report is, uh, we did sell burglary from the Beehive this morning.
Oh, good, I heard about that.
Uh, they, they got everything, they took, uh, plus a little bit of dope and guns and stuff, but, uh, it looks like that's gonna be solved as of tonight. Uh, we are, are working on the armed robbery that happened at Chase. They have a suspect and we're, we're looking for suspect.
That was the Friday night, Saturday morning of the Christmas celebration. There was, uh, somebody at the ATM, huh?
At the ATM, they actually robbed the person, not the
Yeah.
So, yes ma'am.
Y'all not, Chase doesn't want an officer over there?
That night?
No?
It was that night?
I know it was that night and what?
They, they can, they can hire private security.
Yeah, that's what I'm talking about, so they don't wanna do that?
They didn't ask us anything about security or job.
Most of the time, the, most of the time the businesses will hire a private firm for that. So they may have, I don't know, but they, most of the time businesses will hire a private security firm for the extra security. But be aware of your surroundings, it is happening, you know, this time of year it happens unfortunately more during the holidays.
I'll say a couple more things, mayor, real quick.
Okay.
If you're gonna shop, shop in Paris, if you're gonna go anywhere, lock your car. If you go home, lock your car. That's, that's the best tip I can give you. If, if you don't lock your car, you're saying, take whatever I have in it, okay? It's the easiest way to say it. If you have, I've seen people not lock their cars and keep their personal guns in the car. That is not smart, okay? So if you leave your purse in the car, you leave your, your, uh, phone in the car, if you leave any okay, uh, if you go in there, don't get down if there's not lights to get down. If it's, it's black, do not get down at anybody's house if you can't see where you're going. That's the easiest way to stop or get hurt. And, and who signs that? Merry Christmas, guys, cause it's real simple, just watch out for each other and travel in Paris. Be very aware of everything.
Say that again to the mayor.
You hear, huh?
Sure he's going because I walk.
Same thing, same thing I thought.
Okay, fire chief, chief mayor.
I just wanna thank the mayor and council for their support through 2024 and hopefully up to 2025.
I got to ride on a fire truck for the first time today. We brought books to the kindergarten and first graders at Eden Park Elementary. Rainy was the elf, we had Santa and Starby. The kids were super excited, they probably won't sleep tonight. Um, but it was a, it was a great morning to be able to do that. I was very thankful that we had planned it, so thank y'all for helping out with that. Chief, I know you ended up in Juana, so I figure that's where you were.
Uh, I sent the elf some socks, Juan, and we were tied up, yes ma'am.
Okay, and, uh, city, anything for chief mayor? Or for chief party, I don't think I took a breath for a minute, okay? All right, uh, I'm gonna start to my left, Councilman Campbell.
I just wanna wish everybody happy holidays and, uh, Concord Street was beautiful for what, what was happening in downtown, uh, during the Christmas celebration. Also, Dugleys has been nominated. You wanna tell?
No, I was supposed to go today and I, I got stuck in meetings.
Yeah, Dugleys is supposed to be one of the best restaurants in, in the nation. And they were supposed to be filming today.
From two to five, they were filming there, uh, they got selected and so they were doing a, a feature of them.
Yes, and again, I'd just like to wish everybody happy holidays and be careful.
Councilman Bruce.
Uh, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year and health, happiness. We wish all of you, our two chiefs, our public works director, our superintendents, our supervisors, our employees, our council members, our mayor and our wonderful citizens. We wish you the very best.
Councilwoman Muton, two jet, two jet Muton.
First, I just wanna, uh, recognize that Applewood Police Department today, when I was leaving work, um, there was a car stranded in the middle of the highway and two police officers got down from their police units and helped them move their car to a safe area. So I wanna recognize that Applewood Police Department for doing that. Um, and I think I wanna wish everyone a happy, um, holidays and Merry Christmas and a prosperous new year.
Councilman Ward.
That's what's best. Hey, I just wanna wish everybody a happy holidays and I wanted to thank the mayor. I was coming downtown last night with my sick wife and she says, is the city always been up like this this time of year? I said, no. And believe me, it's not like it is right now. It is actually gorgeous coming in from the west side this week. It don't look like Applewood living, but I mean, it, it really looks nice.
Thank you, I, I can't tell you, I, I know you all know, the ones of you that attend these meetings, we, I caught quite a bit of help from the community for the downtown project, but I, I did have quite a few people over the weekend come in and, and say thank you, they finally understood, understand the vision and, and appreciate it. And, um, and I can't really take credit, I mean, I, I take credit for leading the way, but you guys had to support it. And then I had a really good construction team and our, um, I have to say that our electrical team went above and beyond. They hate, like I said, they hate this time of year, but they make me happy. And, uh, and, and they went above and beyond. And so thank you to all the businesses that participated this year that don't, we had a lot, a lot of new ones that added lights that don't normally do that. Um, so that helped and, uh, we had a lot of businesses and households participate in the decorating contest, which helped also. So we hope that everyone gets to enjoy the lights. If you don't have time or the energy to put them up at home, we put them up in the city so you can enjoy them and bring your family. So Merry Christmas and thank you for that. Anything else? Meeting adjourned. Sorry, I'm sorry, Ms. Felicia Williams.
And not only that, we're planning to make United Way, we'll be preparing free taxes for the whole community.
Okay.
And if, um, the, the digs will be in the newspaper and there's also gonna be a super tax date, so.
If you, if you get that information to, Ms. Felicia, if you get that information to my office, we can have it as a wrap-up slide next time, so it'll be in the agenda packet, if you can get, I'm sure they have a, a paper with it. Okay?
So we'll leave this, uh, be available?
That's gonna be a question for a conversation outside of this meeting because it's not on the agenda. Okay?
It's free for the community.
Yep, depends on who's putting it on.
United.
Meeting adjourned.